I'd like to call this meeting of the Willett City Council for May 8th to order. And pledge of allegiance. Everybody please stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call there, Kathy.
It's council members' time. But didn't you come late? Rodriguez, here. Stroud, here. Stransky.
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez.
Here. That brings us to public communication. The council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone may have -- be given an opportunity to be heard, to expedite matters and avoid repetition. Whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the mayor may request that the spokesperson be chosen by the group. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council, commissions, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited, but no action shall be taken. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to speak? Wow, hearing none. I guess we will move to public matters presentation by Economic Development and Finance Corporation. And Heather.
Heather.
You're going to use that. You know what, I'm going to go into the audience.
Yeah, yeah, please. Can you hear me okay? Is that...
That's not for -- that's for the television audience, not for anybody here.
Oh, okay. Well, do I need to do anything?
Whatever it was.
Oh, sorry.
But it just doesn't amplify in the room.
Oh, okay. Is that okay? All right. Good evening, City Council. Thank you very much for having me today. My name is Heather Gerwitz. I'm the Executive Director of Economic Development and Financing Corporation. And I know that most of you know who we are and what we do, but we like to come every year and give you a reminder because EDFC is actually your organization in part. We were founded back in 1995 through a joint agreement between the four cit-- incorporated cities of Mendocino County and the county government to provide economic development, services, to coordinate economic development, and also to run a loan fund. And it's had an interesting history along the way. I've been the Executive Director now for a little over a year. I started in January of 2018. And I'm very excited about the direction that we're going and the work that we're doing. And I'm very happy to share that with you today. And... Maybe... There we go. Okay. So, to give you a sense of what EDFC has done over time, we have lent over $6.3 million throughout the last 23 years. And that has been leveraged with over $20 million in private capital from banks. So, one of the roles that we have filled is in times when people have a lower value of equity because the economy is soft, EDFC can provide a junior position and help a loan actually go through. And there's a number of businesses throughout the county that we have done that on. And one of the hard things about this as a lender is that we do have, unless we've given specific releases, we can't actually name businesses. But there has been over $6.3 million lent. And also, EDFC up until June 30th of 2018 had brought in about $2.5 million in grant This year alone has been pretty exciting. On the economic development side, we really started to engage in that. And we hope to do that in a very meaningful way. We began -- when I started, people would say, "Well, what are you going to do? What is your mission?" And I said, "Well, I'm a facilitator." Like, my goal here is not to have a mission, but to enact what the mission is of our cities and counties and the citizens that live here so that we can provide a strong economy. And there really was no direction. The only plan that we really have as a county is a joint plan for the Sonoma-Mendocino Economic Development District from 2016. And not very many people are familiar with it, more or less have any engagement with that plan. So, we started on that planning process. The first piece of that was the economic summit that we held right across the way. And it was a very exciting success. We had almost 150 people come, which was way beyond what our expectation was. And there was wonderful engagement. And it really set the stage for where we're going to be going. We were successful in an EDA, Economic Development Administration federal grant, to do economic recovery and resiliency planning, which you can also translate to economic development. And so, we're going to be going through a process moving forward, probably in late June or early July, to really begin that planning, to figure out how we can really drive our efforts. So, right now, we're doing stuff, but it's not based on a strategic vision that the whole community and county buys into. So, we're doing exciting things that I'll talk about. We did take on a contract with the county to do broadband coordination. Had a nice meeting with Dusty the other day about that. We put together a strategic plan. It's a very high-level plan for where broadband development needs to go, but it's a critical piece, not just for the economy, but for public safety and education and healthcare. So, that ended up on our plate. We were very excited about that. And the city of Fort Bragg actually just adopted a resolution adopting the plan, or passed a resolution adopting the plan. And Point Arena, it sounds like they're planning on the same activity. And we would love to have all of our cities buy into that plan so that it is actually county-wide, not just unincorporated. Because EDFC, we are collaborative economic development, so we try and work for everybody. And really exciting, we've had a really great year. We've raised over, in this year alone, $1.3 million in grant funds. We received an $800,000 grant from the Economic Development Administration that is all loan funds. We also received the planning grant, which is another -- it's $50,000 a year for two years. And we also received a CDFI, which is Community Development Financial Institution Fund Grant for $400,000. And so, we're in a really good position. But it's important for the council to know the reason we can do that is because you support us. So, if you look at what you've leveraged for every dollar you gave us in 2018, because we had that dollar from Willett's, we were able to get $1,300 in. And the same thing with all our other partners, as they've all contributed, that's how we can do this. We still have another outstanding $20,000 in grants that we're waiting to hear on, but we got a call from the USDA telling us that we had a very competitive application as long as we got them two more letters from businesses. And we did. So, we've got our fingers crossed. And that's another -- that's actually specifically to fund a tool that all the jurisdictions can use to help support economic development. And if it comes through, you'll hear about it. The other thing that I noticed when I came on board, and you'll see this in the upcoming slide, is that a lot of our lending really takes place in Ukiah and Fort Bragg. And I saw the need to really spend more time in our outer communities. And we were very excited. Community Foundation awarded us a grant. And we've also got Savings Bank to participate in it so that we can start sending a representative to spend time in the communities, talking about credit, but also helping develop loans in other areas so we can support businesses. There are still people out there who don't know we exist. A lot of them are using high-interest credit from credit card companies or online lenders. And what we offer really builds a lot more for those businesses and gives them a much better chance than the high-interest credit. So, we'd like to tap into that community. And to part of the Community Foundation grant that's really exciting is that sometimes people see our fees because we're upfront and honest. So, we tell them that, you know, there's a $150 application fee, there's a 2.5 percent closing fee. And when you add that all up, people sometimes get very intimidated, whereas when they see what, you know, online lenders and credit card companies don't necessarily shout that out. So, Community Foundation has been great in stepping up. So, if people are interested in we get low-income individuals, self-employed, small business owners, we can actually, through that grant, cover the application fee and the closing costs that are associated with it. So, it lowers that barrier for people who are nervous about borrowing for the first time. And so, we're hoping that will help as we try and access -- try and bring this out more. Did I go the wrong way? There we go. No, I went -- did I? I did go the right way. Oh, so, just a couple notes, as well as being here in the county, we're also now the coordinator on behalf of the Sonoma-Mendocino Economic Development District. And this is really positive as well. Right now, Sonoma County is getting all of the funds. And basically, when I started, I was able to finagle $10,000 out of them to cover my time. And now that we're applying for the next three-year grant, we're actually talking about leveraging the funds that the counties and cities give to EDFC so that we can actually bring some of those -- more of those federal dollars to the county and support more work. I also participate in the Workforce Alliance and Healthy Mendocino's Poverty Action Team. And we also go to statewide stuff, so California Economic Development and the California Economic Summit, both of those we participate in. And so, on our loan programs, we did a huge restructuring. If you saw previous slideshow from EDFC, you would have heard all about our federal programs. And the truth is, the public doesn't typically care where the money comes from as long as it meets what they're looking for. So, we've kind of changed how we're talking about stuff. We now have four categories of loans. We do everything from under $10,000 all the way up to $250,000. And under $10,000 is really a credit-building program. So, there was a comment before the meeting started about, you know, sometimes it's really hard to, you know, how do you work with people who are sometimes on that edge of can they afford it? And we do a lot of work to make sure that we're giving people the right amount of money and that they're giving money -- we're giving people money they can repay. It's really not a service to the community or a business to give people money if they can't repay it. And so, we've done a lot of work to make sure that as we're going through an underwriting process, that we are making sure that it's -- this loan is a benefit to the community, to the business, and to EDFC. But the community and the business are, of course, priorities there. Some of the businesses we funded over time, and I don't have many Willett's examples, so I would love to do more in Willett's. I just would like everyone to know that. Feel free to have people call me. You know, we've done optometrists, we do a lot of food businesses, so the Boomville Market, that was started, and, you know, is a very successful example. Silver's on the Wharf. We've done retail, so like the Dragon's Lair in Ukiah. We've done Mendocino -- you know, we have Mendocino Solar Service, so solar installations, Yokeo Ranch, there's pretty much a variety of businesses. There's very few that don't qualify. I think the only thing we, like, can't do is one cannabis because it's federal funding that we have, which I know that's a big problem for a lot of small businesses here. But we can't fund cannabis and we can't fund adult entertainment-type things. But pretty much that's what we can do. Everything else we can kind of work with, so as long as it's legal federally. And so, just to kind of give you a little sense of where we're at, this is also new. We've never really tracked this before, but, you know, over the course of this year up until this fiscal year, so July 1st through May 10th, we've had, you know, almost 20 inquiries for our applications, three loan approvals, and we've dispersed $245,750. So, we're making progress. We had a little hiatus while we were getting things in order, but we're in order. And we're really excited about our program now. To give you a sense, over time, this kind of breaks down, we, like I said, we don't have a lot in Willett's right now. We only have one loan. And again, that's why we're trying to do more outreach. And you can see sort of the geographic distribution of where things are in the county. And for those of you who aren't interested, this is where our money comes from. So, that new 20% EDA money actually is a really big chunk of our program. And that really helps mitigate our risk because that big 52% USDA rule development is all a loan to us that we have to repay. So, we have to be very careful with lending that out because it actually has to get paid back to somebody. And looking to the future, just to let you know, we're very excited about the planning work that we're going to be doing because that leads to projects. I don't -- I'm not a planner because I like to plan. I'm a planner because I like to do things that have an impact. But you can't do projects that have an impact unless you've really gone through and done the planning process. So, I'm excited to do that and get through it so we can really start doing more things that support economic development in our jurisdictions. And we're really excited about the lending that we have to do. We have, I just said how much it was, we have about $1.6 million available to lend right now. So, there's a lot of money that's available, and we would really like to get that out to the business community so that they can start growing and expanding. And that's what I got. Any questions?
For leading EDFC.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
What specifically are you doing in the way of outreach to the Willett's business community?
So, we actually have just tried to, I know we have to get in touch about the Well Group, but we just reached out to Ron to see if we can set up an outreach session with the Chamber. And then also, one of the big things in -- you're getting, as a board member, I hate saying this for the first time in a public setting. Oh, you too. But I strongly believe that as of July 1st, we're going to be able to bring on a loan officer who will actually be out there in the community because right now, I'm doing the economic development coordination, the whole executive director responsibility, and I'm the loan officer underwriter and packager. And so, I'm doing about four different jobs, and I need to at least get down to like two. So, we expect that in this next year with CDFI is really going to enable us to bring on a loan officer, so.
Do you have web presence or social media at all?
Yes, we do. We do use -- we have it. We just actually, Community Foundation gave us a small grant so we could kind of update our website. And so, we just did that. We're getting a lot of feedback on that. People are seeming to find things and enjoy looking at it. It's -- so, that's new. And then we do have Facebook that we use. And I think, actually, I found out that our Facebook is somehow connected to Twitter. So, I just found out I'm actually tweeting and I didn't know it. So, that's exciting. I've never made that link personally to Twitter. I don't know if I should admit that or not, but I'm -- anyways. But yes, we do have a presence. And we're really going to be looking at strategically how to move forward with really making sure we're doing the outreach to the business community. Right now, a lot of our referrals come from the bank because to be eligible, we can't compete with the banks. We got what the banks can't do. But that's a huge market. And I think for a long time, EDFC had this opinion that, you know, "Oh, we're the lender of last resort." And it's like, well, no, that's actually not true. Because no, we can't compete with banks, but yes, we can compete with credit card companies. We can compete with online lenders. And anyone who's a private financer out there is fair game. And so, there's a lot of difference in there. And, you know, it's hard. I think I totally understand the pressure to lend because that is one of our major functions. But when I came in, being able to go through a portfolio of, you know, over 30 loans and be able to sit there and analyze them and look at them and see where, okay, I have this criteria now, this whole underwriting process, and we can actually manage some of this. Because I don't like -- I mean, we do have some bad loans, and I don't like calling those people. I don't like having to be the bad guy. That is the, like, least last thing I want to do. And a foreclosure, that is like, I never want to do that again. And I'm sure I'll have to because of the nature of my work. But believe me, the last thing I ever, ever want to do is have to deal with a foreclosure ever again. It is no fun. And if you can fix, if you can at least mitigate the risk by doing a good underwriting process and really making sure you're making good loans, yes, your portfolio is not going to be as big as otherwise. But if you're making sure you're not damaging someone by giving them something they can't pay back, that is what we have to do as part of our ethical responsibility.
Do you have brochures or something that when people get business licenses, we could be handing out?
Yeah, yeah. Here we have one.
Okay.
I was going to ask, do you have frequent contact or can you get more contact with the banks here in Willett's to see if there are some, if they are in fact remembering to refer people to you who they can't?
Yeah, so I have a couple things on that. So, we do talk to banks, but, you know, like I said, I've got five jobs. So, do I talk to them as frequently as I should? No. It's just, I just don't. So, like I said, I, that will be part, outreach is going to be really a big part of this additional position we're bringing on. But we're also working on some referral slips that we can give to the bank so that they don't forget that we're here and they can, you know, send somebody our way. But I do find, like, as soon as I make a contact with the bank, there is a direct uptick in number of inquiries that we get. And so, it is a critical piece. And I do, I have met with Jason Court a couple times here at Tri Counties, and he's been great about being friendly and supportive and sending us referrals, so.
Heather, I was just thinking that some people at home may be watching and learning about EDFC for the first time. Maybe they're thinking about starting a business. And EDFC is an important part, but for some people, it's like, where is the first point of contact? And I know they have a partnership with West Company.
Yes.
Maybe you could talk just briefly about, like, what are those first early steps for somebody who wants to open a new business in the Willett's community?
Well, and I say this all the time, call West. That, I'll give you their number, 707-964-7571. Or I think it's, they changed their website. I don't, is it westcompany.org still?
I can't, honestly, I don't know.
Anyway, I think that still works. They're now West Business Development Center, yeah. But I highly, highly recommend going through technical assistance because they will make sure that you get the support you need as you're starting your business to figure out what those steps are. And I think one of the hardest things is that, as a business, if you have that idea, it is burning a hole in your pocket. And you might even have, you know, $5,000 or $10,000 saved up, and you're just, "I'm so ready to go." And I just wanted to caution you and really highly recommend, take a deep breath, go sit down with West. If you really don't want to go in and work with them, SBA has resources online at sba.gov. But take that time and plan because once you get yourself into a hole, it's really hard to get out of it. And if you have that little bit of cash, you can really leverage that to get funding and bring down your interest rate if it's not as high-risk, because our interest rates are risk-based. They range anywhere from 6% to 12%. So, it's really important to really go through those planning steps because if you really have a great idea, don't blow it on being too over-excited. Call West, that's definitely a must.
And I just wanted to throw in, West is actually going to do a presentation in two weeks.
Oh.
And we all get in, so we're trying to coordinate with West and with you folks and with the Chamber and so that we all know what each other are doing and sort of share strategies. And we're doing that on a regular basis.
Because too many people don't know about West Company and the services they have, and they make assumptions that it costs money. They don't realize that there are services out there that...
Yeah, it's no cost. It's all grant-funded. And so, yeah, your taxpayer dollars at work, absolutely. So, yeah.
Does anybody else have questions? Anybody in the public have questions? Our press, Scott?
I am Scott Werner. You mentioned high-interest credit cards and high-interest online loans. Do you, as part of your funding, do you refinance for existing businesses who did that?
So, we can. That's the short answer. But here's the thing, is that, you know, we have, it depends how deep somebody has dug themselves in, and it really depends where they're at. So, if the high-interest credit is a drain on the profit of the business, but otherwise the business is profitable, and we can help refinance, and we got a scout's pledge that they will not recharge up their credit cards on us, because that happens too, then we can definitely look at doing refinancing. You know, every case is different based on the underwriting process. You know, to really, it depends where they're at. But we have definitely done that in the past, and we're for sure open to doing it again in the future. And if someone's in that situation, we would highly recommend that they call us, especially if they're with an online lender. I just was preparing for our community outreach presentations, and I decided to actually put together numbers to show people. And it was just staggering how expensive credit cards and online financing really are. And the way that they present it, it doesn't always seem that way because people don't always read the fine print about things like, "It's 3% per month." Like, well, we're per annum. If we're talking 6% to 12%, we're talking per annum. So, what is 3%, you know, 3% every month? You're talking about over 30% per annum. It's like, so there's, you know, and when you're, and there's also a difference between a credit card company which does compound interest and EDFC, which is a term loan with just a simple annual percentage interest rate. So, you know, as you're building up interest, if you're not paying your balance down for credit card companies, you're paying interest on your interest, and it just keeps building. So, it can, I think I calculated it out to be something like 52 years if you take out the same amount of money and pay the same amount. Whereas EDFC, you would pay it off over, you know, five to eight years. So, you know, there's, and again, most of that is going to interest, not what you've actually borrowed. So, I think there's a huge value to the program, and we definitely want to continue it. And we're excited about all the work that we're doing. And we're very excited to be working with Willett's, and we hope that we can do more to support you guys in the future.
Thank you, Heather. All right. At this point, we have no ordinances to enact, so we'll move to item five, Consent Calendar. We have our council minutes from April 24th and a resolution authorizing certain city staff to transfer funds between local agency investment fund and Savings Bank of Mendocino County. I so move.
Can I ask a quick question? I did send in some corrections on the minutes. Is that reapproving the corrected?
Correct.
I'll second that.
Okay. Since there's a little money involved, how about we do a roll call?
Okay. Councilmember Condon.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stroud.
Yes.
Stransky. Mayor Gonzalez.
Yes. All right. And not that we discuss it, but we do have informational reports in our agenda there for building inspection activity for April and business license activity. Item seven, right to appeal. Persons who are dissatisfied with decisions of the city council may have the right to review of that decision by a court. The city has adopted section 1094.6 of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to 90 days, the time within which the decisions of the city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. And item eight, commissions and agencies. We meet as the Planning Commission and Succession Agency, and we don't have any business there. So, now we're on to item nine, City Manager Reports and Recommendations.
Yes, this is Stephanie Garbrandt, Sierra City Manager. And before you today is, it's been a year since we sat down and did a goal-setting session. According to our procedures, we do this every two years. And it was asked of me, "Why are we doing this now? We just did this a few months ago." And that's a great question. And the answer is because we actually had a retreat, a council retreat, and that, in that council retreat, it was suggested that we review our goals quarterly. And so, that's what we try to do. We try to bring that back to you. And so, you can see all the great things that have been happening. Things have been actually moving pretty fast here. While this is a quiet meeting, that doesn't mean that we're actually working very, very hard on many things that were already decided and set to motion. The updated list is pasted on the wall to your, to my right, your left, the audience's left. And there's a few things I wanted to sort of highlight. The one, one of the issues on the second page, watershed maintenance and reseeding. This was a big project that started when I came on board, where we did some harvesting, and now we're doing reseeding. We have planted over 80,000 trees in the watershed, which is pretty spectacular. We have one last group of trees. We have about a 50 chance that that's going to be sold shortly. We're looking at that. We also were pursuing a greenhouse gas grant for shaded fuel bricks in the watershed. And while we were disappointed we didn't get that grant, almost simultaneously, we learned that Governor Newsom signed legislation that basically put into place shaded fuel brick that was almost identical to the one we applied for and that we are eligible for, and all it takes is a signature to pass that. I had said that if we were going to get the, get this grant, I'll come back to you to describe the fire break. But we didn't get that grant. This particularly, it requires no matching from the city, so I'm actually authorized to sign this, if you so approve. If you would like a more detailed report, you can get that report, and I invite you to ask. You can ask for that, or you can just say, "Yes, that sounds great," and go sign that. And so, this is sort of your opportunity. We also have... We also have folks in the audience that can talk at some length about this shaded fuel break because it's a great idea and we have some folks in our audience that can speak to it if you would like to hear a little bit about it.
I think it'd be good for us and for the public if-
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Did I do it?
Up here.
No, no.
And that's because the microphone again is for the television audience so that-
Actually, there's quite a few people out there watch this on television.
It's splendid.
Believe it or not.
Okay, my name is Todd Patton. I am UOL Cal Fire Battalion Chief. I have the power of force of Willets Battalion. Sometime back, a couple of months ago, we got notified on a Friday afternoon that we needed to identify at least three projects in our unit, we have the Sweetin County of Mendocino, that would be served by shaded fuel break, fuel reduction, any sort of vegetation management. We have one project, two-part project in my battalion here. We have a large project in Yukaya and we also had a plan for Lakeville. The Willets and the Yukaya Valley projects were accepted at our Sacramento office and funded. The Willets project basically is a shaded fuel break near the beginning of the airport off of Poppy Drive and Brook Trails down the old haul road to the mill site along 101 over the top and along Scal Road. The shaded fuel break is, what we're working for is 100 feet from center line of the roads on both sides. The larger trees are left behind, the brush is removed. We're going to use a masticator head on an excavator. So it has a pretty good reach, very little damage to the ground because the grouzers on the tracks are more, they're mild compared to bulldozer. And we also are opening up existing fire breaks. Where it comes into play with you folks is the other identified location was along a contingency line that we actually put in with bulldozers during the Redwood complex a couple of years ago. And it comes from your water ponds up by my office, goes all the way up, ties into Old Boy Scout Road, winds around Boy Scout Road, takes off on Mariposa Creek and ends up at Tomcay. We'd have a shaded fuel break from 101 to Tomcay going east and west across the whole peaks. It would be done, they streamlined the SEQA process, but the SEQA process still has to be done. It's just streamlined the way they did it. We've already completed the SEQA on the Furco Road project. We began the early phases of it over here, identifying arc sites, identifying waterways. There's different classifications of the waterways. Each of them have a different requirement. Ours is setback for our medical. And when we use the machine, it's going to be followed up with fire crews. We have certain-
Todd, could you explain just again, what is a shaded fuel break? What does it do?
It is a 100 feet on both sides, so 200-foot swath where the small trees are thinned or removed, the brush is removed. The ground is basically left intact. Large trees are limped up 10 feet. That way if a ground fire is coming across, it doesn't climb into the canopies, it doesn't block up the ladder fuels, which are those dead branches. And also, if we have a fire progressing such as the Redwood complex or a structure fire in Pine Grove that gets into the wildland and goes the other direction, we have a place where the air tanker, the retardant's going to get to the ground. It's broken, the canopy's broken up. We can put people out there and we also know, and it's in our math books, that that defensible space is there.
Thank you.
And, oh, I apologize. You started using the same terms and you, so I apologize. But, so, and getting back to the other, the waterways are well protected. We went and drove this one today. There's four classifications of waterways, a dry one. We stopped the mechanical work 25 feet on both sides. A wet, running creek, it's 100 feet on both sides, and a river is further than that. We only have a few creeks on that one. That way the, the little critters that live in the creek, we're not running over them and tearing them up. We can still treat them and work on our fuel break. We just have to use the fire crews to do that. And so I sent a draft agreement. Scott went with us last week, wasn't he? It was great. He knows that land out there, found us a route that we would be able to take. We wouldn't be cross-country, we wouldn't be pioneering, take us around the lower lake, which is Centennial, Centennial Lake, and hops us up right onto our dozer line that we put in a couple of years ago and shoots us right up to the ridge top. And that, by moving around that way, the agreement states, it's basically a boilerplate agreement, but it states what we're going to do. We're going, it's fully funded by Cal Fire, it'll be managed by Cal Fire, the contractors we hire will be paid by Cal Fire. We just need permission from the private landowners to be able to put this fuel break in.
I have a question. So you said you have to do SEQA review on this project? You haven't, this one, you know, what?
Yeah, it's, I don't want to say it's abbreviated, I don't want to say it's streamlined for lack of better word. Sometimes the SEQA takes months and months and we were able to complete this one in a matter of weeks.
And does that get public notice for groups that are interested in?
I don't know, that's not my forte.
I'm just, yeah. I'm just wondering. We have, we have a few people in the community who, you know, love to watch things like that, make sure that precautions are taken to protect them.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
So I want to make sure that they get noticed, so.
I believe the document because Chief Longprier sent me a copy of it today. I believe that's online. But I, I'll have to check with him and can I get back to you?
Absolutely, and I can, I can let you know.
And I'll ask him tomorrow. I believe that it is available.
When we authorized the salvage logging, there were some people from the environmental center who were particularly interested in it. I just think they, you know, they should be in on it and-
Oh yeah, we want to be upfront. I mean, you know, it's going to be obvious enough when the dust is rising and everything else that we're doing something. But it is fully funded, managed by Cal Fire and it is by way of that emergency declaration from the governor. Any questions at all?
I guess more question for Stephanie. Is this something that we could do to date by consensus or more like an agendized?
Well, and that's a great question. Actually, I have the authority to just go ahead and do it. If you guys wanted to weigh in and have a discussion about it and do a formal approval, you could ask for a report that could come next week, however it is time-sensitive, and I could just do this now. And I'm going to give you that option. If you wanted a report, you could have one or you could say that it's fine. You do not need a report. It's pretty self-explanatory. It's, we've talked about it before. It's a very necessary thing that needs to be done and I think we've shown you the mouse before.
Quick question?
Sure.
Is there any potential that there would be additional work done in Brook Trails or is it just this one section from the airport down to the-
For right now, we're biting off what we can chew. We have till December 1st to have this completed. And to be honest with you, I've been a firefighter for almost 31 years. I've never done something like this. So between me and the resource management and our people that do contracting, we're muddling through it. In fact, that agreement I sent to you is a draft because when we, the state process for that is, once I know that you guys are on board, I scan and email it to Sacramento. They assign a number and then send it back to me. Then I make three copies and I have you sign and bluing all three copies. And then I mail it in. So it's, that is just for information and-
Chief Brooks?
I'd like to address Greta's question there a little bit. Todd has his priority location that he's taking care of in the unit. However, I believe it was in the newspaper too. We met up in Brook Trails with the deputy CEO, the county, Todd was there. And we discussed secondary lines and other areas that we would like to do the same sort of project that didn't make the hit list that they're working on now that are their primary areas. So there are other areas within our valley that we're looking at, they're just, they're just not primary, primary function right now. They'll be on like a secondary list of, hopefully we can do this at some point.
Great, thank you.
And I guess Todd, I know that usually you're the boots on the ground when the governor decides to pop in to look at these things. And again, for today, I'm okay with a city manager signing on this and maybe getting a report later on as to how the project went. But I guess I would like to convey, along with Greta's saying there, that when you hear stories from the old timers of the fire that came up from Brandscombe and came in, you know, even though it's not our jurisdiction up there, it would affect us big time. And so-
And, you know, when you've been around as long as I have, I pay, pay particular attention to the fire history and just like the fire that came from Brandscombe, the Valley Fire was a very, very similar footprint to a fire that happened, I think, in 1964. Came out of the same valley or the same canyon, ripped through cob in the same way. So fires burn in the same place for a reason. And it's fuel and pottery and all that. So, yeah, we had, we had a map up there that had X's all over it. And it's, it's not something I want to put up because we don't know if we're going to get to that now or next year. This is the Vanguard. Cal Fire though is fuels treatment, vegetation management, burning. We did a big burn today. It's all on the Vanguard. They've added staffing, even winter time staffing to facilitate that. They've started with two engines during the winter and now they're going up to five or six because we just need people to get out and do these things.
Sounds like kids on stand is pretty util. I think just by consensus up here, are we all okay with just Stephanie using her authority to execute this? Yes. Okay, so, thank you. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. And I will start the process with the city manager. I'll, I'll send that to Sacramento, get the three copies and I'll be in touch. Thank you all very much.
You're the lead agency, so if people do have comments, they go to.
Absolutely. If you want my phone number, I'll give it to anybody in the room. They can call me. We're meeting with the Public Pine Mountain Fire Safety Council, we're very active in this and it's a community effort. We're just bringing in the equipment to do.
I'd like to call tech number.
You bet.
Thank you very much. Some further updates. We're still waiting on updated flood zone maps. The final maps are still not here. We're waiting and waiting. Still not here, anyway. Housing element, we're working on the 2019 housing element update. That's a pretty big deal. If we get, we're hoping to get to council before August 14th. If we do so, the next housing element update won't be due until 2027, which should be fantastic. At the airport, you might have remembered that Caltrans was very concerned about the number of trees we had around the airport and the danger those presented. And last year it was like, how the heck are we going to do this? This is huge. It turns out that Bill and Dusty worked really, really hard to figure out how to do a lot of that through Cal Fire. And then they requested a grant and since we do that really well, apparently, staff completed the grant. It's $123,000 worth of tree cutting around the airport. It's looking really good and so we have a lot of positive update. We received a really nice letter from Caltrans and they're no longer, no, it's Caltrans.
Caltrans Division of Aeronautics.
Caltrans Division of Aeronautics, who are no longer really angry with us. So I think that's fantastic. A lot of kudos to staff for making that happen. Finance has been incredibly busy. We have new finance staff that they're revamping our systems and getting us up to date and in compliance and it's, it's pretty neat to have June on board. And your budget workshop is going to be on Tuesday and it's going to be a really fun time, anyway.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. But, but really, she's, actually all the departments really worked together to put together this budget that's almost done. And it could use the staff again. It was, it was rough. This, this going was a little rougher than the last time for a lot of reasons, you know, you'll hear about. And we have a new form, as you know, our format changed to department-specific rather than fund-specific, which was, which was turning a battleship around. And that battleship was about halfway through. June has completely turned that battleship around until we have an actual, modern, up-to-date budget that is in conformance with what budgets are in the modern world. It's, it's going to look a lot different than you're used to and a lot more detail and it's very transparent. It shows everything. So I'm, I'm very, very pleased, but it's been pretty exhausting. So, thank you, Jen. I have a question. Did we, did we come up with the time on next Tuesday? I believe 3 o'clock?
One.
Oh, 1 o'clock, I'm sorry. 1 o'clock. Yes.
I wanted to know, did change it tomorrow?
Is that work?
I'll clear the calendar again.
I appreciate that.
I will send out a notice tomorrow.
Thanks. Okay.
Hopefully we're not going to have changes again. We're looking good for Tuesday.
No, we're looking good for Tuesday. We're putting the binders together. We picked a nice picture for the cover.
Okay, your budget's tomorrow.
You may have seen me on Main Street taking that picture. The other, so relinquishment with, coordination with Caltrans, wanted to talk about that. We did have a Caltrans meeting this week. So it looks like relinquishment might actually, the Sherwoodburg project will hopefully be complete in November with, that will come total relinquishment of the entire project. So cross your fingers that the rain and all that plays nice and we will have our own road in November. There's a little, there is a notation here that I will let Dusty and Christopher talk about later. As, I want to talk a little bit about Old Howard Hospital. You know, we were sort of keeping track of the Measure B Committee. Just to let you know what's going on, Jed Diamond, who is our District 3 representative for Measure B Committee, he had some health issues in his family and so he has been unable to come here to report on that. But we do have council members who are diligently going to the Measure B Committee meetings and updating us when necessary. And we're all sort of keeping abreast of that and I wanted to reassure everyone that that is definitely, we are not forgetting about that and we are on it. The Riverwatch lawsuit settlement, we didn't talk about that much last time. There's actually a lot of work that goes into that and engineering has worked hard. And Andrea's here if you want to know any more about that. You know, we did the lateral loan program. We have the, the implementation is complete. We are now in the televising lines stage that is due to be complete in 2019. That is a pretty big deal to televise lines and that, what that does is make sure that the sewer lines are in good condition. And it is a, is quite an endeavor and hopefully that will be completed.
I have a question. Andrea, do we use our own equipment for this, right? We're not having to hire somebody to do it?
We do, yeah. And I don't know if you have anything to add to it, but our own crew's been going out and televising lines.
Okay.
Is that just the main lines or is that the laterals also?
Are you doing the laterals or just the main lines? Main lines.
Thank you.
And then we're, we have a new billing plan for our fats, oils and grease program. And we're actually going to bring that to council. What that's going to be is instituting it on a monthly basis so that we make sure that we get paid for this program. Because keeping fats, oils and greases out of our lines is really a main part to keep our sewer lines clean.
Was that part of the Riverwatch?
Yes.
Okay.
It's part of the whole keeping the lines clean process. It's a, it's a multi-step approach and it's pretty common for all these cities that have been sued or not, or trying to improve their-
It's also mandated by-
It is mandated, yeah.
And part of our new revised sewer ordinance too.
Right. So, so new website, complete. We're continuing to tweak that, make improvements. We're working on it all the time, but it's finally done.
Dusty?
All right.
Can we go back to the Lenfield closure one? You skipped over that.
I did, I did skip over that one. And the reason I skipped over it is because I have something here that's not necessarily true. Because we thought, so one of our, one of our wells failed. And when I say wells, it's a monitoring well. And we thought that that was going to be quite a big hit to the general fund to replace that. It turns out that we are actually working with our inspector. We may not have to do that. And so it's sort of, we're working on it. There's two things we're working on. A, Andrea is working with the inspector on this from the county or the state?
It's from the county.
It's from the county.
Would you like me just to share a little bit about it?
Sure. And, and along with trying to figure out a cheaper way to do this, we are, we are continuing, we are starting to try to figure out who in the county might be responsible for paying their share of this because we haven't, this is really a shared responsibility, but we've been shouldering all of the financial burden and we're starting to sort of chase down who we need to talk to to start to get paid. And that hadn't been done for a while and so we're, we're starting to do that. And if you'd like to explain some more, that'd be great, Andrea.
Yeah, I just wanted to explain that we became aware of. Oh, sorry.
Could you come up here? Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, just last week, we became aware of a compliance issue there. And we are prepared for the worst-case scenario. But we today found out that there may be another avenue that we can pursue. And so we're working with the inspector to come up with a plan to remain in compliance and do it in a way that won't require a full replacement of these wells.
Thank you. Another project that engineering and wastewater and was working on was the weir. As you know, you approved a new system for measuring water in our system. And we now are probably going to come to council to determine whether the existing concrete weir, which is sort of blocking the water pathway right now, can be removed. And that fish can go through, which is a really good thing. And so we're probably going to come back with that in the future. So that project, while it's done in terms of now we can measure it, we still have a little work to do on that. So that's why it hasn't been totally completed. Our emergency action plan for city dams, it has been completely funded with grant money and we're working with Laco Associates to complete the project, which will be done by the end of this year. So that's very exciting. We have, we finished our underground storage tanks. And in our next, so I'm going to go to the strongly recommended in the next two years.
Page eight.
Page eight. Just a few things. Development impact fees, we actually have a proposal on the table from a company connected with RGS to do impact fees. We haven't had much of a chance to look at it, but if we are interested in that, we should probably move on that.
Is it RGS?
That is a company that brought us Celia, and they are a financial consulting firm.
Thank you.
But while they don't do this work, they connected us with people who do do this work. They brought us a proposal that I thought was fairly reasonable that would actually put a whole plan for development impact fees in place. It would take some time, but it was, you know, it would be good to do and it's why it's on our list. What is probably more pressing is to update our use fees. And we're going to come to you this year with some updated use fees. Because right now, our planning fees and permitting fees are frighteningly low. They don't even begin to cover the cost of what we actually do. And so we need to get those up to date. Regarding sphere of influence, congratulations, Dusty. He went to LaFco on Monday. We now have a sphere of influence. So that's very exciting. That was a long time coming.
Thank you.
And Dusty will talk about that more later, but it happened. I'm stealing all your thunder, I'm sorry. And more good news on the groundwater sustainability. We are doing really well in funding for the groundwater project. And the city's ground has been placed on a priority list to receive half a million dollars for Prop 1. So that's great. We have the, we've been talking a lot about how we're going to get money to do Main Street. And the biggest thing, one of the biggest things that people were worried about is how are we going to plant more trees on Main Street? Because we've lost all these beautiful trees. And really happy to say that we got our tree grant.
Yay!
So that's a $360,000 grant.
About $256,000.
It's about, yeah, it's about $260,000. I'm going to give a shout out to someone I used to work with, the City of Tracy. He was the Public Works Director, Don Scholl. I, when we were looking for tree money, Don wrote a grant and it was successful. And I called him up. I said, "Don, help us. We need trees." And he said, "Oh, staff, I got you." And they worked with Don. He shared his complete grant application with us. We basically just used his grant application. He gave us a bunch of hints and walked us through a pretty difficult process in getting this.
Nice.
And it's not only going to fund trees for Main Street, trees for our parks, an urban forestry education program. It's a really great, great program. And so congratulations to our grant team yet again. And shout out to my buddy, Don.
Could you say 260?
Approximately 260, yes. And it will fund 25 trees for Main Street and another probably 75 trees throughout the city.
When?
When? That's a great question. I think that we'll be filling out paperwork for the next couple of months because that's the way things go.
Thank you.
We want to plant them right before the rains.
We can't probably plant until next spring. We have to wait for Caltrans to relinquish.
Yeah.
Well, now they relinquish in November.
We can plant some of those in a park, though, right?
Yes. So what has been added, so we have this goal list with three lists. And we, but I had to add another grid over the course of the last year because new goals appeared. Many new goals have appeared. And some of those are, were sort of transitioned from old goals. Some were requests from council, some were emergency projects. But I really did want to capture those. So the last three pages of your goal grid are the new projects that have appeared since we did our goal process. We have our Penn Street is an emergency project.
Where, what page are you on?
Page 14. Urban Forestry, you know, I had put, "We'll hear about results in May." That's a win. We won that one. Rails with Trails Project, grant awarded. We're going to start drawing down funds in the summer and that's going to go towards environmental work. And I think that the main, the moral to the story of our grant writing right now is that we need to transition from grant writing to grant administration. Because right now, we have too many projects that we can't even do right now. So that is what we need to do. We're sort of stopped. We can't handle any more grants, so we're, because we're going to be working on actually implementing this. And so that's a new grid. It's like working with our grants.
Hopefully, just a 99% stop if something important comes through.
We'll see.
The point of getting grants is to get the work done.
You know what I'm thinking.
You know, the point of getting grants is to get the work done.
And so aligned with this, you know, councilhead asked for a report on what the progress is. And we're going to come forward with that very soon. So you know what we applied for, what we're working on. And because I think that's an important part, so you know where we are. And we're working on that. Revenue enhancements, we've been doing, knocking our heads together on that. We're going to talk about more of that in the budget process. We have some ideas. We need to work on them. While we're doing a lot of exciting things, and you're going to learn about this through our budget, we do need to enhance our revenue. But we've got some ideas and we're going to come to you and the workshop will talk a little bit about that. Traffic Safety Committee, this was requested by council. There's a number of really key traffic issues. And I put this because we have some, council members have some really key items that we've been talking about. One of them is the intersection of Commercial Street and Main Street, which we've all recognized as, is really a problem. And right now, it's under Caltrans control. But I know that our staff has worked a lot on it. And I wanted to sort of give an update on what we've done about that so that you can ask questions and sort of see where we are. And I know a few people have been working on that, both Scott and Dusty's been working on that. And Andrea, I think you're, you know a little bit about that because Jeremy's been working on that. I don't know, we didn't quite decide on who's going to speak to that. Andrea, would you like to speak to it or?
Sure. Okay. So at the relinquishment meeting, we discussed the safety at that intersection and delaying the pedestrian, let's see, delaying the left light and letting the pedestrians come out always, giving them a head start to increase safety at that intersection. And Jeremy and Nash from Caltrans are planning to meet with their traffic safety coordinator, I'm not sure what the title is, and see what the possibilities are there.
Would that be only for the left turn, but not be if you're going east on Commercial?
I believe that there was some discussion about modifying some of the traffic lights there. I'm not totally clear on all of the details of the delays, but.
I think, Sabrina, part of the issue is that there's what we want depending on the software. And that's where the guy comes into place, that he, he may not be the guy that programs, but he would know the capabilities of the boxes that are there.
Right. We were just trying to find out if it's actually possible to change the type.
I like the idea that just last week, somebody nearly got hit on the other side. So I was just wondering about the possibility of doing something that would positively impact the.
You have to delay the green light for the vehicles so that the pedestrians can start crossing.
Yes.
It's going to be for whether you're turning, you know, any of those turns that cross the Main Street pedestrian crosswalks.
Yes.
There's also, I don't think that the amount of pedestrian usage there justifies it. But in urban areas, those ideas of having a, what do they call it? A scramble, you know, where only pedestrians move at one point. So you have.
And they can go diagonal.
The vehicles going this way. And then you have, the vehicles don't move and the pedestrians can go everywhere all at once. But it really has to be probably a more active number of pedestrians to justify that. This is a good.
I think this is a really good head start for it, though. We need, that intersection is terrible.
It is.
Along with a lot of other ones in town, that people, they drive too darn fast.
We're working on that.
Well, you need to work a little faster because it's happening big time. Thank you.
My hope is that Caltrans will have heard how serious that safety concern is. They seem to be a little reticent to do anything. They kind of want to wait till it's not their problem and then let the city deal with it. And I personally feel like they should deal with it now while they're still in charge of that because it's a public safety issue.
Well, and I'd like to know if the software is capable, because we may end up inheriting something that we need to pay for on our end. And I'd hate, it's kind of like me selling you a car with three tires and saying, "Well, it rolls." You know? And so I'd rather know what's up.
So I know it was previously discussed and Caltrans wanted to wait until the bypass was open and traffic was off of that corridor. So I think chances are it is likely and that's what Jeremy and Nash are going to discuss. And so I'm sure we'll report out once.
Yeah. I seem to remember a conversation right after I first got on the council with them that I think they were hoping that there'd be less traffic all the time and then it might be moot. But I think we're finding that it's going in spurts.
So I'd want to just express strong agreement with Chris's point is that it is a safety hazard right now and we shouldn't have to wait to relinquishment to have steps being taken to make it less hazardous for pedestrians. People that are waiting to turn, especially left off of East Commercial onto Main Street, don't look at the pedestrians. They just, they see an opening, the light turns green and, so, I mean, a delay would be an important safety measure. So let's.
We're trying.
Yeah. Get Caltrans to do it.
Cannabis ordinance, of course, we've approved cannabis ordinance and we have actually started collecting some money for the taxes. We are going to come back with an amended ordinance likely in June, I believe. And so that's going along nicely. The cannabis businesses continue to knock on our door. And so that's a good economic development opportunity. Red curbs will happen, right? Red curbs on the list. Along with the enhanced crosswalk signal for the crossing of State Street in front of the high school. We've already purchased it. It will go in, but we'll likely wait until after relinquishment.
It showed up today.
Is it going to be solar or?
No.
Yes.
Oh, wait, it will be solar. Fantastic. AWAS weather system, you know, we were sort of, we were doing the AWAS weather system at the request of the FAA. We weren't super excited about it and we were a little bit concerned that it would cost something every year to maintain and we weren't excited about that either. Turns out, the FAA is going to be funding that. And so we will not be absorbing that cost every year. The FAA decided that they wanted to pay for it for us. So that's awesome.
Do we have an estimate of when that might happen?
Dusty, when is the AWAS system going to go in?
Well, right now, we're going through a bidding process. But we're also exploring this other opportunity that's definitely just a little bit too that might delay its installation.
And I guess it's not a sure thing, but it's a pretty good thing.
Dusty, Julie, Community Development Director. So right now, the projects on schedule to be, begin construction later this year, we just became aware of another potential option with the FAA where we use a different funding source to pay for the AWAS installation. The benefit for the city of using this alternative funding source through the FAA rather than our regular AIP funds that become available to us for airport projects, the FAA would actually then take on ongoing maintenance costs with the AWAS. So obviously, that's a preferable thing, recognizing that AWAS maintenance, when we talk to other jurisdictions and airports and consultant groups, is about $5,000 a year. So we're going to continue to explore that alternative funding source through the FAA and have that happen. If we do go with that source, that is likely going to delay the installation of the AWAS. To what extent, I'm not sure, but.
Thank you.
Anyone has any additional questions? There's a lot of things on this list. I can tell you that staff is feeling pretty well right now. Do you have any questions?
I do. So on the, back on the to be prioritized list, there were a couple of items regarding economic development efforts. And since we just heard this presentation from EFC regarding economic development and because I didn't come onto the council until after you all had your brainstorming session, I really would like some clarification on what economic development is and what you all had in mind when you set it as a goal. Because when I look at the results, bringing Buxton in, who basically said, "This is how to get a chain." And then reaching out to local businesses to participate in a free booth at Music in the Park, I'm not really sure that that's what you had in mind as a result of economic development. Maybe I'm wrong, but I would like to know what you were hoping for and how we'll know when we cotton there.
So I think that this is a question that really does need to be brought up because when we had our retreat, it was also when the person giving the retreat spoke to all the council members individually, he did remark that everybody had a different idea and that, you know, we have not been able to do it yet just because we've been really busy. But I think that we should, I would like to come back to council with a report, giving you an opportunity to talk about that, but also talking about all the efforts that we have done. Because we actually have done quite a lot.
Yeah.
And to talk about staff's efforts, what other cities do, and what you guys have in mind, I think that's a really good discussion to have. And I would like, I think that's great. So when we can bring that forward, it's going to be after the budget. But I would like to bring that forward and I think it'd be a great discussion.
I just think it would be really fantastic if we could have some consensus of what we all had in mind so that we have, you know, a real idea of how we're moving forward and whether or not the achievements match the expectations.
I agree with you.
I agree, too. I think that having a session devoted to that subject, whether it's a workshop session or whatever, and maybe prior to that, we could all submit some thoughts so that it goes into a staff report, too. Because I think economic development is just too big of a, it takes in too big of a potential area and we don't, we have to focus in on what we mean by that.
Well, I'd like to bring you actually a report first to talk about what economic develop, I mean, it's actually a thing that cities treat differently. And I'd like to give you examples on what cities do.
Great.
So that you have that to sort of look at and digest and then have a good discussion, a robust discussion.
And I highly recommend that we all read the current issue of Western City. It's all about economic development and it's fascinating reading about what other cities do.
Yeah.
That's a lot. So, yes. Is in this one?
It's all about eating. It's all about eating.
And, you know, I have worked for, my previous experiences were with larger cities that actually have economic development departments, and we actually do not have one. And so, as such a small city, we are much more focused on the nuts and bolts and brick and mortar of a city. We don't really have that layer, and so we have to be really creative about this. There's no dedicated staff whatsoever for this, so we have to be creative. But there's, that doesn't mean we can't do things, we can absolutely do things. And we have to, we have to identify what we can do, but what else, what you want us to do. So that's important.
And can I also just say, I spoke with Dusty at length, and we talked about how so many of the projects that are being undertaken right now really could be considered economic development, working on the city, fixing our streets, installing trees, doing these projects that seem like sort of mundane nuts and bolts really do lead to economic development down the road. But if that's the case, we should all get on message so that we can convey that to the public, so they know what the city is doing to help improve our economy in the ways that the city is able to.
That's great. I'm not going to put out a date right now, just because we're juggling some things with the budget.
But before summer, or by summer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Summer's a good target.
And I'm glad you gave that kind of, I think you brought that up before at, either at the one meeting or the one afterwards, where we were kind of all over the place when it came to that, and so, what do we mean, we need to focus on that.
And it's one of the reasons that I brought the woman from Buxton over here, just to give you an example of, this is one thing that people do, and it wasn't meant to be that we should do this, it was meant to be as sort of an example of an avenue that people do go down. It was just sort of a, just to expose everyone to that sort of way of thinking that we can or cannot do, or may or may not want to do. So that won't be added to our list for this report. The only other things I have in terms of issues to talk about is, I'm going to let Kathy talk about the Great Race, that is right around the corner. Next week, as I mentioned before, we are going to have a presentation from the West Company, talking about some initiative that they're doing that sounds really exciting. And we're also going to do the presentation regarding climate change. We did have Music in the Park two Sundays ago, it was very successful. It was really fun, a couple hundred people came. A good time was had by all. So thank yous to those who came and participated, and hopefully we'll be back in fall. And that's all I have.
Just another comment of whether the council, at one point we were saying we wanted quarterly updates on this, I don't know if that's too much.
It's up to you. I mean, it's really, if that's too much, we can do it every six months.
I think every six months is sort of a necessity. We want to make sure we don't do it less than that, but I'm not sure quarterly, given everything else that we have on our agendas.
No, and I, but also I think sometimes if you're able to scratch one off, we definitely want to hear about it.
And that's what the newsletters are for. I mean, the newsletters are sort of, I want to keep you as informed as possible what's going on, and so when we do get a big win, that's going to be in the newsletter.
I think six months is fair, you have other tasks to do.
I agree.
All right. So, anything else? Kathy?
The Great Race. It is just around the corner, we're a little over a month away. Things are moving along quite nicely. We are going to be scheduling a meeting probably next week to talk about volunteers and what we want our volunteers to do. I recruited 90% of the staff. So that brings up a question.
June 20th?
Twenty-fifth. Ceremonies will start at about 11:45. We would like permission from the council to close City Hall that day, as most of staff will be directing traffic, serving food, all the above. So that's something that we'd like to throw out there and see how you feel about that. And you can let us know.
I'm for it as long as we notice the public, so that everybody knows.
Absolutely. That's kind of why I'm asking now, so we have plenty of time to let people know.
There's a Caltrans ad hoc meeting.
None anymore.
It has been changed. As of this morning.
As of this morning, when we realized that we were the Great Race.
Is there a reschedule for that?
I think the date suggested was the 18th. I haven't floated the date yet, because she just sent it to me, the 18th, which is the Tuesday before.
Well, the staff who's working, will they be paid that day, or will they be volunteering?
No, they, well, they're going to be paid.
They're going to be paid.
Their regular salary.
A normal workday.
But they're going to be working on the Great Race.
Okay. Great. Will there be, will there be staff that's not working on the event that could be, even though the city hall's closed, that they could be working behind the scenes if they're not helping with the event?
They don't have to.
Oh, I imagine public.
They have to.
Sewer water, they will be putting people at the plant.
There's always has to be people working.
Yeah. It's basically City Hall, that public works will be directing traffic, things like that. So they will all be working.
Okay. I'm just thinking logically, like if you've got someone who has a high skill, and they're just doing something that's of value to the city, and then we're putting on monseigneur job that isn't high skill, is there a way that maybe we could get some other volunteers for that job? Or is that really not much of a concern?
There we have something. I just.
Maybe that's not much of a concern, I'm asking for your judgment on.
I just, I want to say it now, this is once in a lifetime for the city of Willets, and I doubt whether it'll ever come back. I do not know, I think that there's going to be quite a few people that come for this. And I just think that whatever we can do to make a real good impression upon the people that are running this show is going to be a real improvement for us. And we need the people that come out of our area to see this, to see our downtown and everything that we're trying to do. And I just can't say enough, I said from the very start that I knew about it, I told Kathy and the county and the people down at the Rec Grove and all this kind of stuff that I would volunteer for it months ago, and do anything I could, because I just think that it's something that we need to do, and I think that we need to do it right, and if it, what it takes to do it right, by taking some of the time from the staff here, then we need to do it. That's just my opinion, but I'm only one vote.
I just, I want to say that I agree with you, Larry, that it's really important, but we also have a judiciary response, their ability to make sure that we're being responsible and acknowledging that we're using the taxpayers' money wisely, and payroll is one form of that. I'm not denying it, I'm not saying it against it, I'm just asking for clarification as to what it is we're doing, so that if the public comes to us and asks, you know, questions about how the use of staff time, that we have a logical argument to explain where we stand.
I think that's absolutely fair, and what I would say is that we will have, people in critical positions will be doing their job. I mean, obviously, we're going to be answering police calls, we're going to have people at the sewer plant and that sort of thing. But for folks that can take a few, that, we will have the ability, if we, if we close City Hall, this is a huge economic, this is an example of a good economic development opportunity, and we don't have the money to hire other staff to direct traffic and all these sorts of things. So it's sort of a redirecting of our city staff to work on a sort of up with Willets economic development, this is our city and we're proud of it, because we think like there's going to be a thousand people there at least. And I think it's important, I think it's important to show this sort of unity and the staff part, and we're all pretty excited about this.
And I think it's opportunity as a team building for the city staff.
And that, too.
But I, and again, Sabrina, I agree with what you're bringing up, I don't think you're totally at base with that, but I think that probably our managers in place here, they know which critical positions are out there, and so the public knows, it's not like you're, if the police are used, or the fire department kicks in, they're all recognized there are other duties that are more important if something happens, and I would suspect that everybody's using common sense and that when the time comes. And for the time involved for this, I really, one of the things I got to tell you, making, I had a conversation with some business folks, and it sounds like you can have signs up, but having a presence on the web, and when people search things, and the fact that we're listed on this, what I find on the web, whether you do something good or bad, it stays there. And if this is something that puts us on the map in the digital age, then I think it's important, because, I'll tell you, it took me two years to get Safeway to put a sign on the highway. And I don't know what the end results are for Safeways, you know, whether it's helped business or not, but when I talk to other business owners, they tell me that those signs do help. But the conversation I had was that what really helps is to make sure that Google knows where you're at, and that the younger folks are all using their phones now for finding us. If something like the Great Race pops up, and Willets pops up, when they're trying to book a vacation, or deciding where to get off or not, then this is something else, you know. So I mean, I think it helps us all out.
I just kind of agree with Larry that this is a unique opportunity, and we have to do it right, and having the city staff available to help manage that is pretty much necessity, because, I mean, you could, you could probably also recruit volunteers from the community, but you can't just rely on that, obviously.
Correct. And we do have that.
Yeah.
People from the chamber, of course, are going to be there, they have received phone calls from people that want to volunteer. So we are working on all sorts of people from the community coming down.
It's a really big deal, is basically what we're saying. And so, I mean, I'm agreeing that closing City Hall that day makes some sense. I would agree with.
So do we have?
I think so, although at least Larry and Jerry and I are saying yes.
I don't have an opinion.
I have no objection to it, I just wanted to make sure that we were very clear, because I know that there's going to be criticism, and I want to just be able to present the full picture. And I feel a little bit like I'm the bad person for asking. I'm the elephant in the room, but I feel like it's our duty. So I hope you don't think that I have a lack of enthusiasm, I just want to be a fraction.
I think that's a very fair concern, and I think that those are things we should consider.
But I'm for it.
So, I think you're good.
We're going to be running around, and, yeah, for my job, trust me, I'm going to be working all day.
And we'll be there, but you haven't been given duties. So be sure to give us duties.
Oh, I will. As we get closer, we will have a meeting and talk about what everybody would like to do, and the dictators will all be there, and they will be announced at the very beginning of the event, and they've got a whole lineup, I just received it on Monday, a timeline of what they would like to do, Nicole Suttles, Angela is going to actually sing. And, yeah, so it's going to be, we'll have quite an opening.
Anything else, Kathy?
I'm good.
Do you want to talk about any of the vendors or the food that's going to happen?
Next time.
Okay, next time, okay.
Thank you.
Can I just mention, I guess it's in the same department, that I know that the Farmers' Market moved, so this last Thursday, to the West Mendocino, little half a block there, and I was there, and it seemed to be very successful, and I thank the city for arranging that.
Yes, thank you for, I forgot to bring that up. It was, went really smoothly. The Farmers' Market has a new manager.
Francisco.
His name, first name's Francisco, and I can't remember his last name, but he was wonderful to work with. And we, actually Francisco and I went around and knocked on doors and asked people if they were okay with this, and it was actually a really nice opportunity to meet the neighbors there, both in houses and in businesses on West Mendocino, and say, hey, this is happening, and they were all, you know, yeah, this sounds great. The vendors liked it because of their shape.
Well, there's not much shape, but.
We're going to have to change a little signage, but that's about it.
Okay. Thank you.
I've heard good feedback, I was curious, as some other people mentioned, how did the businesses on the first block of Mendocino, did they see an increase in sales, were they open later?
I don't know, I should probably check back with them, they were excited about coming there, though.
Okay. I'm hoping that that helped give them a boost, and it was definitely more visible from the street.
Yeah, and the parking is better with them, because we had actually a fair number of complaints when it was in the parking lot, because people couldn't find a place to park, because it was taken out the parking lot.
All right. Finance Department, do you have anything?
She's got a report.
A report. All right, so we can. Any resources?
Not this time.
Dusty?
Christopher. Oh, okay. Good evening, council members. Mary Gonzalez, as you well know, I'll be leaving City Willets, May 16th will be my last day, and decided to dress up. The suit and the podium feels like a pulpit now. So, I just want to say, I loved being here a lot. Everyone here's treated me like family. I built relationships so incredibly fast here, not only with the staff and council, but the public as well. So it makes it incredibly hard, but at the same time, everyone that I've met is lifelong friends at this point. So, I'm not disappearing, I'm trying to figure out how to do this Facebook thing. Not real good at it yet, but I'm, but I'm on there, and so.
Be careful.
Right. And the last young lady that spoke talked about tweeting, I have no clue what that is. But I have nothing, good things to say about the staff. Each, I know, I've met all of them, there's not too many, and I've met all of them, and I fell in love with all of them. And I want to brag on them about how incredibly passionate that they are about our city. And, you know, it's with a heavy heart, and I've lost many nights of sleep trying to make a decision, so, don't know if it's the right one, guess we'll find out, but we have no idea where life takes us. But I really love it here, I don't want to leave, I like the beauty, it's beautiful here. There's a sense of freedom here. People that lived here their whole life and never got out, you know, they really, and want to leave, you know, they, it's not worth it. I've been around, and it really is a nice area. Northern California is a very, very beautiful area, and I haven't met a single person that was a complete sour grape, even with my code enforcement issues, you know, I've found a way to reach them. We're never going to get 100% compliance, but I know I've been getting over 50%, and that's, that's huge. So, building relationships with the town. And speaking of, you know, being on the clock, you know, the town got to know me, so I'll be out in town after hours, and people will come and talk to me about building questions and stuff, so, you know, it's neat, you know. When I first moved here, I could walk down the sidewalk and nobody knew me, but here lately, these past couple months, I walked down the sidewalk and people are running to catch up to me and ask me questions, so, you know, it's incredibly difficult, and I don't want to get emotional at this point, but I really loved my time being here, and it is with a heavy heart. I'll be moving to Clermont. I don't like traffic, I don't like, but I do want to keep my life. And I did want to comment on our city attorney as well, you know, anytime we reach out to Jim, he's always so quick to get back to you, and I've always been jealous of his hair, too. And Ms. Karen's hair, you know, I wish I had that, you know.
Don't be brash.
Yeah. But like I say, I'll be here for another week, so all my, all my projects I've got in order, I'm going to create a workbook for the fill-in and the next, the next inspector, so that they have kind of a Bible to go by. of a Bible to go by based on what I've learned here, so they're not just in the dark. So all my projects are going to be up to speed with all my contractors out there, so they're not, you know, left in the dark as well. So I'll be working really hard next week to make sure that everything's up to date, up to speed and that nobody's gonna pan in, so to speak.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. You'll be missed.
Thank you very much. Not gonna cry. On TV.
And I just wanted to say publicly how wonderful it was to have you here. When we were losing John Sherman and we were faced with the prospect of, oh my God, we have to find another John Sherman, and we were, found you, it was a gift. It was, oh my God, this guy is so perfect. He's wonderful. And I remember that it was a very difficult decision for you at that time and I remember you first said no. And I got on the phone and I talked you into it.
I have saved every one of those emails. They will always be with me.
And you have exceeded every expectation in your performance and in your attitude and it's just been an absolute pleasure having you here. And so I wish you the best in your career and don't you dare go away and not come back.
No, I'll be back for rodeo days. Occasionally, I do put my foot down. So I did discussion last night and I'm like, you can come if you want to, they may throw rocks at you. But I'm coming back for the rodeo days. You know, I really wanna be part of that. And airport day if I can as well. And just wanna comment on my boss, Dusty. Dusty has given me a lot of autonomy to do my job. Dusty's a great boss. He's not a micromanager. He's given me the freedom to do what I do out there and I really appreciate that. That's the fun thing about working here, is there's no backstabbing, you know, there's no, it's perfect. It really is. And people are people. We have our issues, we know that, but it's like a family. And deep down, we love each other. And I've developed love for everybody that I've met. Unfortunately, that's a bad habit of mine. I get attached to people rather quickly and truly care about each and every one. It's a good fit.
Chris, I'm sitting here a bit shocked. I had no idea and didn't see anything about you leaving. I'm bummed. And I'm also very concerned about what our plan is. I mean, as somebody who.
Dusty, Dusty has been trying to network with some people that he knows. I've been out there recruiting different contractors. I mean, you know what? You can apply. I mean, you've got the construction background, you already live here, your family's here, you know, give it a shot. So I am out there, you know, with the people that I know, you know, trying to say good things about how fun this job would be, you know, and you don't wanna work physically for the rest of your life, do you? You know, I mean, this is actually a great, a great position.
I've asked him to write a letter of reference for us.
I will. Certainly will. So, we, and I'm gonna be praying sincerely that the right person will show up and just fit right in.
You are the right person. But another right person.
There's many right people, there really are.
You've been really great. Thank you so much.
So who will be the point of contact for individuals that would normally contact you?
Well, we haven't worked out the details, but my, the inspections and questions will probably still come to John's phone, which is my phone, still has John's voice on there, but the voicemail is mine, probably should change that. So the capability is there to take those messages every day and respond as best they can. I think we're trying to possibly recruit a fill-in and maybe Dusty can speak more to that.
We do have a plan.
Yeah.
Well, I just, and I'm glad we have the plan, but as somebody, just in general, in the public, who has something in the works as a business owner, I'm just wondering like, who's gonna be as a business owner? Who's my point of contact? Who can I go to? Aside from being a council member that's, you know, very disappointed that you're leaving, although I wish you all the best.
I should say that since, because people do watch this. I've watched these. I watched one from 1989 the other night. Wow, that's pretty interesting, this is a full room, so I'm really surprised it's empty tonight. I do wanna mention that to the TV audience. I mean, you know, get your permits in, get your inspections in, you know, I'm gonna be dedicated till I'm gone, so use and abuse me to the max, you know, so.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Right? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening, Mary. Good evening, council members. Dusty Dooley, still doing my best to fulfill the role of Community Development Director. I properly chastised Chris for putting his family before us. You know, and it really was a tough decision for him. And, you know, what I told Chris and what really is true is if Chris had come and said, you know what, I'm gonna take the job, but I can only work eight months, I would've said, let's grab Chris. Chris came at a really critical time for us. We lost John Sherman, who was obviously was the best, and Chris was too. But he came at a time where we were setting records for building permit activity mainly because of the cannabis industry. And these weren't easy inspections, these weren't your standard inspections. So Chris, you really came at a critical time for us and even though it was short-lived, you know, you really did well for us. So we really appreciate your time here. And, you know, last offer, I'll share my sandwich with you at lunch. It's not too late to change your mind. So having said that, we congratulate Chris on his new job. And we've already got the job out there being advertised again. We are reaching out to folks that have in the past worked for the city, like when Mr. Sherman would go on an extended vacation or something. So we do have folks that are familiar with the office and have played part-time building inspector for us. Also reached out to the county to see what services they may be able to lend to us, whether that's one or two days to provide inspection services. We're also have been in contact with the folks that have ongoing projects to alert them of Chris's absence from the department that's coming up. But we do at least have a plan to continue services until we're able to find another permanent replacement, so. Also, let's see, there was 96 applications that CAL FIRE received for the urban forestry grant. Forty-five were invited to the second round, 25 applications were awarded. City Willets, once again, was by far the smallest jurisdiction to receive money. City of Tracy helped us out immensely in putting together our application. We had some components that were different than theirs, so it wasn't just a verbatim copy and paste. And again, Jim Robbins was the main person to work on this, certainly. Other staff members had time in there as well. But again, it's just, I always wanna give the council kudos because you hired that position at a time when it wasn't the obvious right decision. And I think that, again, it's proven to be a wise investment. At this point, we've now gone after over $20 million in grants. We're actually a little bit surprised on how successful we've been, to be honest. Our batting average is pretty high and our city manager is correct in that we're really now understanding that there needs to be more of a focus on the grant management and making sure that we spend this money down and complete these projects. The last thing we wanna do is not fulfill our promises when we get the money and then gain a reputation from that. Having said that, there are a couple of other grants that we're still looking for, including one that would help with some new recreational facilities, either enhancing existing or even creating new ones. So we're still putting together a scope for work with that. When we have that finished, we'll bring that back to the council. Let's see, let's see, earlier this week, we went in front of LAFCO, Local Agency Formation Commission. The city now has its first adopted sphere of influence in its history. It encompasses, obviously, the city limits. We've grown our sphere of influence to include a number of properties in the Della Avenue area. If you're one of those properties in the new S I, absolutely nothing changed. You're still under the county jurisdiction, everything is exactly the same. It's just now that property is eligible to be annexed into the city. There's a whole process for that, there's a whole notification for that. If folks do not want to be annexed into the city, they can make that objection. And when people do, it doesn't even happen. But it is an important step for the city. We also were able to establish areas of concern around the interchanges. This is something that the council gave to me as a to-do when I first started working here. What that means is if there's any development, any permits that are proposed in the areas around the interchanges, the county has to notify us. Okay? We also alerted LAFCO, which includes two county supervisors, that, you know, there may be an interest in the future in the city looking to expand our sphere of influence beyond just the Della Avenue area to look for additional opportunities to build housing. This is something that would obviously need to be vetted with the council and the community. So we just sort of mentioned that, you know, it's a possibility. You know, I think it'd be who's both the county and the city to start talking about a tax sharing agreement, even if we don't have any inkling or desires to expand the city limits and grab some of the land that the county has zoned for housing and bring it into the city so that we can then extend our city services, water and sewer out there to have a better chance of recognizing some good development for us. By having a tax sharing agreement, when we do see folks that are interested in having an appropriate development, you know, they don't have to wait around for the city and the county to enter into agreement. If we have an agreement in place, that annexation process becomes immensely easier and faster. So speaking of economic development, I would say that a tax sharing agreement with the county would certainly lend itself towards that goal. May 21st is the deadline for submitting your dispensary applications. We sent a letter out to those who have notified of potential interest to remind them of that deadline and to come in sooner and later to submit their application. Let's see here, I think that's, I think that's what I had to share as far as some updates with the community development department.
Dusty, as part of LAFCO, I think UMA said that they would send the finished product to the city, would then we post that on our website?
Yeah.
So that the public has a chance to look at that? Because I gotta tell you, it is a really impressive document. When I looked at Fort Bragg's, as I said on LAFCO, and I was like, why can't we have something like this? And the folks at LAFCO did us proud. They also were quick to give our city staff kudos for all the help and Chief Wilkes, et cetera, for all the work that they put in for creating that plan. But I'd like to share it with the community.
Yeah, and we'll certainly, when I get that document, we'll make sure to forward to the council as well.
Dusty, I feel like I keep saying this to you, but congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. And then I didn't know if I should stay up here to talk about the next item or.
You, we have two items for actually on the agenda and one of them's Dusty's and one of them's June's. And I know June is anxious to do hers.
Get back to the budget.
Actually, one quick, Jim, did you have anything? I know you sent us some memos earlier.
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, all right, so.
Thank you, Andrew.
Product Director, you do in a report, there's one item on this agenda. I will recommend to establish a police law enforcement assistant administrative program, which created new fund, the fund number gonna be 681. And then transfer $43,820.41 from the trusted agency fund, which is number 600, into this program. And also appropriate the rest of the 600, the money, the 600 funds to the different type of funds according to this attached schedule. What happened is, it's coming to my attention, well, I start looking for city's financials and while I look at the audit, and then I was like, there is a 600 funds, it's called a trusted agency fund, and then it's being used as a deposit account for the city, and that's not in line with the definition of trust funds. Trust for, or agency funds, meaning the money in there is not belong to the city, in the city you have no control with. Normally, like, you have like CFDs, that type of thing, you collect the fees from the special district and then you disperse it. In that case, so really, that's what that fund's supposed to. In a simple like security deposits or illegal lead, water swimming pool deposits or community center deposit, those are actually belong to, city has a right to use it. If they've broken something, we have a right to use it to fix the stuff. Those are belong to the security deposit, appear pretty much as general fund items. So that's why in the 600 funds is not correctly allocated. And also, what we found out, we have this LEA program, with the law enforcement system program, for a very long time, and the money is just into this fund and then out of that fund. And then if you look at 1819 budget, what a budget before that, there is no authorization to, or spending authority for this fund whatsoever. So we've been using that LEA money allocated from the state, pretty much without authorization before. So that, I just tried to fix that situation. So these funds received from the state is gonna be a special revenue fund, trade like the other type, like assets for features and those types of special revenue funds. So in that case, the police department can actually, when we receive the money, and then they can literally spend it. So we are, that's what this is about.
So this is basically just cleaning up some accounts.
Yes, yes, because it is like a police chief come to me says, oh, I need to pay off this fund. I thought, you don't have spending authority on this. And that's how it come to my attention. Plus, I've not looked the past audit, 17, 18 audit, or 16, 17 audit, all the budget before this, and then there, we never really budget anything out of the 600 fund, which we should not, because those are not our money. But it's like, but we'd be misusing that funds for different purposes. This report, it's just gonna clean up.
Do I have a motion?
I'm of approval of the staff recommendation.
Second in my line. Anybody for the discussion? Anybody from the public? At this point, Kathy?
Yes. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Yes. Frederick, excuse me. Strong.
Yes.
Stress me. Mary Gonzalez.
Yes. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Jennifer.
All right. You know, I noticed, before you come up here again, Dusty, Scott, you're out there in the audience, did you wanna give a quick report on something?
No, I can do the CAL FIRE.
Okay.
And also for close session.
Okay. All right. So Dusty, you wanna, then I'll have our public safety.
You're Dusty.
So you heard me talk about getting grant money and spending someone else's money to get a project done. Now I'm here to get authorization to purchase a new vehicle for the cannabis program in the Community Development Department. The amount, the vehicle is a 2019 Toyota Prius. It's a hybrid, so it works both on electrical and gas. We will be able to make use of our electric charging station out here on City Hall if we are able to purchase the vehicle. The amount of the total purchase, including taxes and fees, as well as delivery, is $28,288.54. You may recall when we were establishing the cannabis application fees, that we did include the cost of a new vehicle for the department. It also was included in your budget, but we still, again, need authorization to execute the purchase of the vehicle. At the moment, the department of four, thank you, it was two when I got here, we share one vehicle. That vehicle's typically used by the building inspector on a daily basis. If I have to attend a meeting in Ukiah for LAFCO or MCAG, if our community development specialist has to go to Eureka or Redding to attend a grant webinar, or not a webinar, but a grant, a grant meeting, if one of us has a training in Sacramento, et cetera, we've been using our own vehicles. That's not ideal for us. You know, if. You know, if we get into a wreck, your insurance doesn't pay for it, ours does. If our vehicle gets damaged, we're out of luck, you know, and it affects our lives. So, I don't know if you understood that, but, okay, yeah. It's also probably recognized with some cost savings, and you're not having to pay the 58 cents a mile for us to travel outside of town. Anyways, those are the justification for asking for a new vehicle in part. Let's see. We also, we chose to go with a state contracted dealer. What this did is it allowed us to avoid the bid process. We also did search around to some of the local dealerships. So for us, that was like Eureka, Ukiah, I think Santa Rosa, another place that we looked at. Based on their information, the state deal was the cheapest route. Let's see here. We're also going to apply for a state rebate that would drop that by $1,500 if we were successful. So we will, if we do purchase the vehicle, we'll go through that process, and if it's avoidable, we'll put the $1,500 in back into the fund.
And I understand on the state rebate, the time is ticking on that, right? So we need to purchase this?
That's our understanding, yeah.
Do we have to go for service down to this, or will it some, the local people take it?
Oh, we would work with our local folks to service the vehicle.
I don't object to the necessity of needing it. I think you've made a very valid point. The question I have is more about the funds. We had a previous council report that talked about how when we set the permit fees, that we were already not, we didn't set our permit fees high enough for the amount that we were collecting. So although we budgeted for this, we already know that we're not collecting enough. So is there another way related to cannabis that we can offset this amount?
It's a good question, because when we, well, I'm allowed to ask the answer now. Because there's actually two types of permit fees.
Right, so we're talking about the cannabis application fees. I think this year, this fiscal year, we maybe spent down more than we gained, but the previous year, we gained a lot more than we spent. So I think overall, we do have a budget surplus in that fund.
And I think what's different than the cannabis permit fees is they are, they are very recent permit fees, so they were actually set at a reasonable rate. It's our other building fees that are really low. And so this, so for cannabis permit fees, we need to spend it on cannabis activities, and this is going to be our hard-to-do cannabis activities. And so that fund is good. It's the rest of all the permit fees that are, just needs some tweaking.
It's not that our 18, yeah, it's not that our 16,000 dollar...
Does that make sense? Can I tell you what I think I heard?
Yes, please, please.
Because I want to make sure I understood it. So, and this is 2019, so in 2017, you're saying that you collected more than we spent. In 2018, we spent more, this is what I heard, we spent more than what we collected. And then in 2019, because we have cannabis tax revenue coming in...
Excise tax, right?
Excise tax coming in. So I didn't understand that.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we have two sources of cannabis income, our revenue, and one is through permit fees and the other is through taxation. We are, we haven't done anything with our, the tax we've received is in, is, can be, can be used for anything. That is a general fund, it can be used for anything. When we receive permit fees, those have to be used for cannabis-related activities, and so that is what we have been doing. And so we actually have permit fees, this car was budgeted as a part of the permit fees, and so it's part of the budget, and we were anticipated to spend this on this vehicle.
So it's not a hit to the general fund?
It's not a hit to the general fund, although it is general fund technically, but it is also earmarked for cannabis-only activities.
But it did sound like this car would be used for more than just cannabis, it could be used by the community development specialist to go to a...
Yes.
We think the part that I was confused about is because we had a prior meeting when we were talking about the taxation and the permits, there was something in the report that stated, to my understanding, that our permitting fees were not totally recouping our true cost, so that we actually were in the negative, and although we budgeted this vehicle, that now expending that money would continue to put that in negative. And I just wanted clarification of that.
Okay, so, and so what that meant was our permit fees deal with costs associated with the cannabis program, while cannabis tax will deal with a general fund revenue, but will also recoup any societal impacts that cannabis has, and if that helps. It's sort of two different ways of using the money. Our general fund taxation money can be, it's free, we can use it for police, we can use it for whatever. But our permit fees are special, they really are expected to be used for activities related to the institution and the permitting and going-to-building inspections and all those things related to cannabis, and I think that that's...
Wasn't the item, though, in the list of progress about use fees, which are not related to cannabis, and that was what was going to come to council later in the year?
No. Yeah, use fees not related to cannabis.
Right, and isn't that the thing that we heard? You say that we were outstripping?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So not cannabis-related at all?
Right.
Use fees that we're not collecting?
But maybe I think what Suprema is getting at, I mean, is that the justification for our excise tax, that it was the, we'll call them societal or non, I guess...
Not necessarily directly related.
Not direct.
Sort of indirect.
Indirect cost that the cannabis is having the community, that's what our excise tax hopes to recoup.
And to those that aren't, we have a, we have a fee schedule, and we have a master fee schedule that we are supposed to sort of come back and update every year, to bring it up to date and to really capture what we spend on things. That master fee schedule really hasn't been updated very regularly, and therefore, we have lagged behind on many of our permit fees. Our cannabis permit fee is not one of those fees. That is, we think, is pretty good. It's the regular building fees, and we have a laundry list of other fees that are quite behind. And so that's what we want to bring back to, we're probably not going to tweak the cannabis permit fee.
Not at this time, although we are keeping track of money coming in and money going out, and if we do need to tweak those, we'll come forward with that idea.
Okay, I think my misunderstanding came from my memory of a document that we had that alluded to the fact that we weren't collecting enough money to keep up with the true cost of the cannabis permits. Not have to go back and reference that document. But I thought, that was my understanding of that document.
And it's not the cost of the permit, it's the cost of the activity. So you have this new activity in town, and it is a business, and like any business, you need to have, we all sort of support that business, and so you need funds to sort of support us.
So I think I can carry moving forward. I was thinking more about the setup cost, and you're thinking about more of the ongoing aspect of it, so I can see where you're going.
Madge had a question.
Yeah, I just, I think it's, might be related to what Suprema is asking, is the permit fees that we have been collecting, starting in 2017, are they covering, is it from that sort of dedicated amount of money that we're paying for this, wholly or partly?
Fully.
Okay, so then that means that this vehicle, at least most entirely, is going to be used for enforcement of the permitting.
It doesn't have to be, but it's going to, we do a lot of inspections for cannabis.
So, so that I get this straight, Dusty, so we buy this with this money, but for the sake of argument...
All staff could use it.
All staff could use it, but hypothetically, I get it if, whether it's our building inspector or you go out to do cannabis-related business, we would probably code in our budget out of permit fees, and, but if all of a sudden, you run to Eureka for a sewer project related, that's okay, but you'd probably build a gas to something different.
That's exactly how we're setting it up. You got it.
All right.
I just want to make sure I understand.
Yeah.
I will move approval with the staff.
I have a question.
Haven't opened it up for public.
Is it open to public?
Open to public.
So why this specific car, and what exactly do you need it for? Like, what are you driving to do what?
Yeah, okay. So, the reason we chose this car was, we had a limited number of cars to select from the state's list. And it wasn't the cheapest, it wasn't the most expensive. And I'd say that, you know, Toyota has a good reputation. We wanted to go with the hybrid, because most of our use will be around town. We've got the electrical charging station, and so there's a cost savings from being able to use the electrical vehicle. We also recognize that we often have to drive to Ukiah, to Sacramento, to Eureka, to Reading, et cetera. And for those longer trips, you know, the electrical vehicle, my understanding is, it doesn't have a charge to where you can go on those long distances. And so that was sort of the reasoning behind going with the hybrid. The main use of the vehicle will be by our assistant planner, who runs the cannabis program. But that's not to say that it wouldn't be used by other department members as well. Right now, we have one vehicle. It's not really, it doesn't work for us to take it on longer trips, even if I have to go to Ukiah today, because then our building official doesn't have the ability to go out and do inspections. He uses the vehicle on a daily basis. He's the one that drives that vehicle 99.99% of the time. I mentioned before why it's problematic to have staff use their own vehicles.
And Dusty, before, we had a Lumina, and then we had the Escape, and the Escape is the one that's been used. The Lumina is out of, it's no longer in the fleet anymore, is that correct?
I'm not sure.
I had not heard of the Lumina.
There was a white Chevy Lumina that was at City Hall, and that was the one, so if you haven't used it, chances are it's...
Yeah. The vehicle I was given when I worked here was that golf cart that had a battery, and I used it, I used it once to go down to engineering, and luckily, my brother happened to be around, so he could help me push it back to the parking lot here. So anyways, hopefully we'll have better luck with Toyota. I don't know if that answered your question.
It is a plug-in hybrid, so that for the around-the-town trips, it's not going to cost anything in gas, and it's going to be, and it's not going to be putting greenhouse gases into the air or anything else. It's only if it's on the longer trips that it'll go into, kick into the, to the gas motor. Sounds good.
So I have a motion by Madge, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, second by Larry. Any further discussion? Any further public? And Kathy?
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
Strensky.
Yes.
Megan Mullis.
Yes. Fire chief, because I'm afraid you're going to bolt out of here.
I guess. We're mutually neutral right now. Fire. Counselor and fire chief, Chris Wilkes, good evening. I want to give a little quick update on something that has happened, was really cool in the fire department, and actually, it's a good forum for me to reach out to the council and then to the public, to hopefully get some history from people that I don't know. Pretty soon, I'd like to get on the agenda, as soon as I get a really good set of elevation drawings of the new firehouse, because I think that everybody's going to be really happy. We'll be reaching out to newspapers here shortly, because we just secured funding that is way better than what we had ever thought was possible a couple of months ago, and it's secured and done. So we're, the public's going to save literally millions of dollars over, over less than 40 years. So those things are all good, and we'll get that pushed out as soon as everything is sealed and done. But we're, Roots, Roots Motor Power reached out to us, as we all know, they have the Babcock Bell Collection. I never knew what was in the Bell Collection, I just know that it was in the backyard of the Babcock Museum, but we got a call, I got a call late in the evening, that said that that Bell Collection included the original fire bell for the city of Willets. And if we'd be interested in having that on a permanent loan, it's still the collections, if we ever did anything with it, it would, it would certainly go back to the Babcock collection. But how could you say no to that, right? I didn't know what this was, I immediately called our architect, I have these great individuals, I'm like, okay, we can put it up at the top, like a bell tower type thing, and we want to do this, and I want to see it. I went and looked at the bell, and it's huge. Okay, so it's, you know, it's like 36 inches around, it's bronze, it probably weighs 400 pounds, I mean, it's huge, but still super exciting, and we have reached out to our architect for that. What I'm looking for, it came with an article from the Willets News from 1976 that gave somewhat of an explanation of this bell and where it was located. We can't come up with any pictures of what it looked like, or how it was set up, or, they, the article kind of explained how it worked. Basically, if there was a fire, the people from the public would down there and ring this bell, and that's, that's how people were alerted. It will be at the new firehouse on display, it'll be polished up, and it'll look really cool. But we think that it's missing one piece, I don't know what to call it, like the yoke or a portion on the top, and I'd really like, if anybody knows any history on that, or if anybody from the public has history on that bell, or a picture of what that may have looked like in the past, we're extremely interested in that, and of course, we're under kind of a time crunch for that kind of information. But like I said, I have spoken with the architect, and we have some really good ideas of what we'd like to do with that. And I want to thank Roots also for thinking of us and finding that, and it's a really special piece for this community, and it can be a really neat addition.
Did you reach out to Karen Mattson over at the museum yet?
I have not.
Maybe?
Karen Mattson.
Yeah, and find out what the museum might have in their archives?
I have not asked the museum, I've reached out to all the fire guys, but, you know, that's where our history has mainly come from. There's another piece of the history that, there's like a four-hour, or a four-year discrepancy in what we have for written history compared to what was in the newspaper article, so I have some questions about that, and I don't want to change anything with the, you know, the stroke of a keyboard and not know which of those years were actually right, so I, and there's some research that needs to be done. But it's harder and harder to find folks that have that history when you're talking about, you know, 1888. It's, it's hard to come up with that kind of stuff. It's a neat addition, so I'll take that. Suprema, thank you. And if anybody else has any information, or do some talking around town, people you may know, it's really important to us, and I'd like to at least get some kind of information on that, if you guys can come up with it.
We'll put the word out.
I appreciate that. And I'll be reaching out to the newspapers also. I think that I'd like to request that there be a big article on this financing. The community's going to be extremely proud of what they've done, and the community had a big role in it. And that's all I have in this, if there's any questions, me.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief?
I'll make this quick. We had the bullet trap installed at the range, the one that FEMA gave us funds for, the one that was burned. Couple things I know Madge will appreciate it, it's environmentally rated, federally rated, we're not required to have that, but we picked that because of that. And it's also fire resistant, one of the only ones we could find. So that's all installed. We're losing one of our officers to another agency, but we have already, in fact, in anticipation, months ago, started a background on a person from another police department, who will be able to start quickly, hopefully, once he leaves. I think next week's is last week, or actually, this week. We, like I mentioned, Mr. Stransky, we're working on the heaters. We sent several officers to radar and LiDAR school, LiDAR is the laser radar type radar. It's not really a radar, it's a laser, anyway. And we, they have been actively working. We put out a news release advising people to slow their roll, because we're out there signing people, and we've, most of the ones we've signed so far are close to 50 to 25. So people, absolutely right, people are speeding everywhere, so we're out there in force, they're working on it, that's what I meant by working on it. And I'm really proud of my, all my folks for their community engagement they have been doing, they're really out there with the community. I even noticed, when you drive down the street, more people waving at us, and some of them with all their fingers, it's great. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
All right. That gets everybody?
Is that good and well fair? Is that good welfare?
Yeah. All right, city council committee boards and agencies. Dusty stole my thunder with LAVCO. So, no, that's fine. I, I'm happy we finally get that behind us. And just kind of an aside, I did ask the LAVCO chair to, or the chair, but the LAVCO director to check with legal counsel to make sure I could vote on, on it because you sit on these county boards and they said that LAVCO is supposed to be its own entity and therefore I could vote on our project as a commissioner. So.
IMCO.
IMCO.
Are you too?
Yeah.
Okay, there was an IMCO meeting on Monday and it was interesting when Dusty said about the amount of money that we have acquired here in the city. We wrote a letter and had the chairman of LAVCO sign it because there are two congressmen that are saying that the percentage that small cities are getting and small counties are getting is more than their share. And it's Orange County and the Bay Area. And they're saying because they have more people that they should get a bigger share of the amount of money. And so we wrote a letter saying that that's not true. And anyhow, that's, we're on that. The 162 that is the Covelo thing, and I don't know how many years, but when I was on IMCO, must have been five or six years, maybe, yeah, five or six years ago, we went to Covelo and went around the whole thing. And it's now going to take effect. And I just couldn't believe that any other jurisdiction in the state of California that ever came up to look at the thing that they had to deal with would even think negative about spending money for the people that have to walk down a ditch to wherever they need to go to a health facility or whatever. And there's a person in this, in our staff that has good stories about this. And we invited these two people to come to Covelo and look at the positions there. And, you know, whether they will or not, but if this is a way to, you know, we think to show them that we're just not wasting it. The money is really worth file in the little communities. Anyhow, that's the one, that's my big thunder for that. And it was all budget, the rest of the thing was budget. The one nice thing was with the Redwood Trail is that the railroad now is in the process of actually setting up the perimeters for the two different areas. One of them where the railroad set up a, I don't know how to say this really right. They didn't get any money, but they gave a position for another railroad to use their facilities. And we're working through that without trying to pay our life savings for this. And this negotiation has gone very well. And I got this from John Hascheck, which is now president of the railroad of them. And so he has really helped us out. Anyhow, those are the two things that were really nice. And the SB 152, if those people that keep track of these, and SAB 14002. And these are the two outfits that are trying to cut the staffing. And this is not just for Willets, but this is all the small communities in the state. And I just thought that it was interesting that since Dusty's thing about we're getting all of this money, that the other places are saying, hey, you know, we want the money. And it, it just bothered me really bad. It bothered me that, and so we just unanimously voted to, to have them send this letter and say, you know, you guys come up and watch and see it and we'll be happy to take you around. I just thought that was interesting. Thank you very much.
I attended the Caltrans ad hoc committee meeting that Dusty spoke about earlier. The real takeaways were that we will be getting the AS builds for the Main Street segment of the relinquishment project within the next couple of weeks. We also did successfully set up a meeting with Jeremy and Nash and someone else, as Dusty mentioned, to try and hash out that traffic signal issue. We did learn that Caltrans is not willing to allow us to modify their design, so we won't be able to put pavers into the bark planter strips this year before the relinquishment is completed. We'll have to wait till it's actually signed and done, truly ours. So most likely it won't happen until next spring. But design team is working on it and we will be ready to go when the ink is dry. The other news was that the Sherwood project is moving along well. They're making up time after the long winter delay. They definitely feel like they are making good progress. They did complete the sidewalks in front of Village Market. That wasn't supposed to happen until the end of the project. They put that onto the front end to keep the progress moving. They're doing split shifts, so essentially they're working double shifts, starting at 7:00 PM and then having another team come in and they're working through the morning. So they are hoping for completion late October, early November, and then relinquishment should happen pretty quickly after that. So it was, it was mostly positive meeting, I have to admit.
Suprema or Madge?
The only thing I want to share is that we haven't received a resolution from NTA on that bus stop over by the Evergreen Shopping Center. And I had reached out to Carla, who's the general manager, to find out like where are we at because the next step was to have a, a meeting. And she's just very busy working on a deadline for grant application. So I didn't want people in the community to think that we'd forgotten. It's just, it hasn't made its way as a priority just as of yet, but it's still, still out there thinking about it.
Are they still working with community folks and stuff?
It's kind, the whole thing's kind of on hold. There's a bus stop there. You can stand there and the bus will pick you up. But there's no shelter and we still need to have discussions with MTA, the city, and the individuals in the neighborhood. And I just wanted, didn't want people to think that we'd forgotten that just because of this big grant application that needed to be submitted, which should be submitted in this next week, then it'll become a priority again.
Thank you.
And electric buses that you guys are going to get?
That's the big application. Yes.
EDFC, that we heard from Go Year Tonight, is going to have a kind of retreat session on Friday, May 17th over on the coast. And it's kind of extended and more focused on our longer range priorities and strategies for economic development for County. So I'm looking forward to that. And the next Mendo Recycle or Solid Waste Management is going to be the day after our next city council. That'll be on May 23rd. And things are still very up in the air about what's happening with that. And I'm doing, I'm trying to do a little bit of research and get advice from different people about what our options might be with the current dilemma of not having a general manager and potentially losing funds from the county and potentially privatizing a major part of the services that MSWA has been providing. So it's kind of a ball of wax.
I forgot, I have one other thing. I did volunteer to be the city representative on the museum advisory board a couple of meetings ago. And Kathy just let me know today that I was confirmed for that. I still have to fill out some paperwork, which hopefully will arrive this week. And that will allow me to attend next week's meeting, which will be on Monday. They will be discussing the Sunday hours for the museum and the new compromised offer from the county, which would allow us to keep our museum open on Sundays for reduced hours from noon to four, but still have Sunday operating hours here in Willets. So hopefully I'll be fully papered up and I can vote yay on that in support of that.
I understand they're also going to reduce the Saturday hours to also have it noon to four. And it has been 10 to 4:30 or something like that. So I, maybe we, I don't know whether we want to give an opinion.
I actually asked John Hascheck whether the reduced hours came with an extension of hours during the week. And he thought it did. So there may be some evening hours that go along with that, small reduction. I don't know if you can, can I ask him about?
And could you, sorry, could you also make sure that during our major holidays, like around the Fourth of July and stuff, we're not going to be stuck to that noon to four? That there are still special days where we'll have longer hours?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, because Fourth of July.
Yeah, yeah, I want to make sure that it's in writing that we've got those times still.
All my extended family went to the museum that day.
Yes.
I was going to say that apparently from the county's perspective, having it noon to four on Saturday and Sunday solves a personnel number of hours that they can assign to it kind of thing. And that, you know, it sort of makes sense, but on the other hand, it is a little, it's still a disadvantage to our community to have reduced hours on both Saturday and Sunday. So I'm, you know, I think, I think we should still be objecting to that.
Initial discussion was just for Sunday and I was surprised to see that Saturday was included and I'm disappointed with that. Although the rest of us don't have any voting power because we don't serve on there, we can certainly be present in the room.
Yeah, okay, I will definitely pass that along.
I just want to mention, I forgot to mention with LAVCO that they established their work plan for the next budget year and with that also their budget. But the indicators are that in the following year's budget, that the amount they charge each city will probably go up because they are basically going into, basically we agreed to spend into reserves to maintain, they cut back a little bit on legal, but the idea was to, like the idea that they would go along this year at a certain level, but the following year they may come back. So I just, since we're going into budget, it's not so much going to affect us this year, but the following year.
Okay, do you know how much we're talking about? It's important.
So just, just, just wanted to throw that out there. And also, I'll be attending the League of Cities, May 24th, after our next council meeting also. So, and that'll be at Blue Lakes, beautiful Blue Lakes out there in Humble Creek.
Nice.
So at this point, oh, we had a finance committee meeting, but at the end of the council member reports. And Madge and I attended that Monday, no, Tuesday, Tuesday, Tuesday. Yeah, thank you. Only yesterday, and June gave us kind of a, an update on where we're, I guess, where we're at and that they're still doing a lot of work on preparing this for our workshop that we'll be doing as a council. And so that's it. Where to go? All right. Any good welfare?
I have one. The Willets Health Action Team, my husband took that over a couple of years ago from Jed Diamond. And for those of you don't know, it's the, often referred to as the 10,000 Steps.
Nice.
Yes. And on June 9th is the next event. Registration's at 9:30 and the walk starts at 10 o'clock. You know, we start off at JD Red House. We also planned it so that it would take place the same day as the Health Fair, which will be happening at, which will be happening at Red Grove from noon to four. So come out, do the 10,000 Step Walk, stop at the Health Fair and getting some health and fitness that day. I'll be out there and I hope that everyone will join me.
Can doggies go?
Absolutely.
On bicycles?
Bicycle, dogs, strollers, we see it all. Everyone's welcome. It's really fun. You talk to your neighbors and that you're walking with as well as the people on the route and yeah, it's a good time.
And it's called the Cullendula Festival, but it's in conjunction with the Herb, the Mendocino Herb Guild.
Thank you.
So I'm, I'm sure it's going to deal with health issues as well.
Yes.
Focus on, on it.
Any other good welfare? All right, we have a closed session conference with legal counsel pursuant to government code section 54956.9B, anticipated litigation, two cases. And if we have anything to report out, we'll report out.